Evening, everyone. This meeting is called to order. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks, and this is Thursday, August eighth, 2024, and at 7:00 P. M. And at this time, we'll do roll call. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Carroll.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood. Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
And Councilman Perkins.
Present.
And I'll recognize our interim City Manager Tammy Sattler Jones. Thank you all. Are there any updates or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none. Okay. They're on the back. Thank you. Hearing none, the agenda is accepted by common consent. We will now move into presentations and administrative business, starting with the minutes, Item A and Item B, which is seven oh two, 2024 City Council Meeting, and B, which is seven thirty, twenty twenty four City Council Work Session Meeting. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Have a motion?
Yes. Councilman Perkins.
I move that we approve the minutes to the July second, twenty twenty four City Council Meeting and the July thirtieth, twenty twenty four City Council Work Session Meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved in second that we approve the minutes for July second, twenty twenty four City Council Meeting and for July thirty, twenty twenty four City Council Work Session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passed. Thank you. We'll move into reports, starting with Planning and Economic and Development Report with Ms. Cameron.
Good afternoon, Honorable Councilmen and Mayor and women. I hope that you had a great day today. Thank you so much. The first thing I would like to report on is a Connect Atlanta 2024 Summit that I attended on July the twenty fifth, to talk about how the city is looking, or the state is looking to move forward from GVs to EVs. One of the things that they emphasize is that the state has received federal money to construct more charge stations for underrepresented areas. So I'll be reaching out to our representatives to make sure that we get another charge station. It talks about, of course, we have to have the power, and I know that we already have one, or have enough, because we already have a charge station here. So we want to make sure that that's happening. Sidebar is that Georgia is looking to be about seventy percent, seventy to ninety percent of EVs by 2030. Hopefully, that will happen. Next, I'd like to also say that I attended the Metro Chamber breakfast, early breakfast yesterday morning, and I heard four, there was many communities that actually presented, but there was four Georgia communities that actually won awards for smart cities. So I will be contacting our representative at Georgia Tech with the Partnership for Inclusion. They, they're a great, it's a great project, so I'm looking to do a digital project with them as well. The variance application from two months ago, or sixty days ago, that was for a cottage home development at ten sixty one Jolly Avenue. That application has been withdrawn, so it will not come before this board. On next Monday, August the twelfth, the members of our DDA, our Chairman from the Planning and Zoning Board and Chairman from the Historic Preservation Commission, will be touring our designated downtown areas. And for the record, we will not be discussing city business. Again, we will not discuss any city business. It would be a tour of those areas. Something else I would like to, another, another topic I would like to, to present is, we have two applications for the Historic Preservation Commission, so if we don't have any more, you will have that coming before you, Madam Mayor, before you, next, next month's meeting for nomination. And the last thing I want to present is the Economic Development Initiative. Just want the board to know that you do have someone that is, that has created Economic Development Initiative along with land use planning. The initiative that I started, when I first started, was doing a temperature of what the city needed. One of the things that I first and foremost saw is that we, we don't have a lot of commercial uses in the city. And, and what I did is I took a temperature of that. I looked at different reports and projects that had gone on before. I started from a report that, back in, I think it was 2006, 2010, looked at economic development initiatives from there. I also looked at the 2013 TAP report that was done by the Urban Institute, Urban Land Use Institute, saw the economic development policies and recommendations there. And I'm, I'm putting, I'm stressing these reports because I would like for you to, and the community, to go and look at these reports on the city website. I looked at the 2015 report from the Urban Land Institute that talked about, it gave policies and recommendations for growth in the city. I looked at the 2017 Comp Plan Update that gave the, the city recommendations on policies in every aspect of the, you know, for growth, especially what was happening in the city. In 2017, I believe that that population that's listed in there is correct. I also believe that at that time, that the recommendations, the policy that was provided and the recommendations are correct. However, the 2021 update does not reflect what was happening in the city. I do respect the fact that, you know, a couple of policies were added, but I don't believe, and I was not here, but I don't believe that it reflected what needed to happen. And I know that we have, we have residents, and I don't, I don't, I just want to say to your resident, to the residents, I want you to understand that you have, the city, the city has employed people who are highly educated. Most of us are specialized in what we do. So when we, when you, when you mention about, you know, bringing in people who are specialized in, in doing things, I want you to know, most of the, most of the employees, my team members have master level degrees, and some of them have two and three master level degrees. Some of them have legal study degrees, and some of them are highly specialized in what they do. So we serve you well. We want to make sure that the, the city of Clarkston grows and that it grows well. And with that being said, I would, I would just say, the last thing I want to say is, the Economic Development Initiative that we are doing, first and foremost, the Comp Plan is our guide. The Comp Plan tells you how to grow. The Comp Plan tells you the best way to grow in the future. And, and I believe, again, I believe that was served well, and, and I will follow that. And I will ask our leadership, as you have made decisions to move forward, please invest in the future of the city of Clarkston. I've spoken with a few, and one of the initiatives that we had, first and foremost in mind, was, I believe, one of the, I was trying to remember which council person wanted a parking wrecks manager, because one of the things that kept coming in my department when I came was Parks and Wrecks, and, and we've talked to numerous of, of, you know, developers that want to develop bike paths and, and splash paths, and we got very excited. And this is something that we can do, because we have a lot of children in the community. And so I would ask this board to please think about the children, and think about using property that's going to be, is, is income-producing property. And I'm not saying to tear down our past, but I'm saying build on it, and remember the kids, because they are the ones that will be here when we're gone. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes.
Ms. Cameron, is the Historic Preservation Commission up and running?
I know you're short a member, but it is, it has bylaws and everything?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. With that being said, we'll move to the next report, which is the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. In the spirit of talking about our staff and the great things that they do here in the city of Clarkston, I do have a special recognition today that I would like to share with each of you, and we'll start with our new Assistant Police Chief. I would like for him to stand. His name is Xavier Todd Senior. So that is your new Assistant Police Chief. I would like for our new social worker in the Police Department to stand, Candace Allman. And then I would like for our new detective in the Police Department, Alexandra Kushnan, to please stand. And then last but not least, I would like to recognize Jacqueline Taylor. Jacqueline is a recently hired employee, a little bit more recent than these three individuals. However, Jacqueline recently completed the Municipal Revenue Administration Program through the Georgia Municipal Association, and we have a special plaque here to present to Jacqueline. And as, as Ms. Cameron mentioned, you know, we are doing our very best to hire the best qualified people here in the city of Clarkston, and also to continue to educate them. Professional development is very important to me, and also I try to stress that to our staff. So Jacqueline, will you come up, please, and receive your certificate? Mayor, I don't know if you want to, the council want to get a picture of her? And Mayor, I did want to also call up our Police Chief, Christine Hudson. I'm sure the community is aware of the recent homicides that we've had in our community. And of course, you know, we started out on a good note, and I don't want to end on a bad note. However, I want you to know that she and her department are being progressive and taking steps to try to address those type of issues, and so I wanted her to quickly share the things that they are doing in regards to addressing gun violence. And then also, I know the council is aware, and I put it in my City Managers' Report, but we would like to try to do a gun violence summit maybe later this year, to bring the community together, to talk about some of the things that we need to do to take steps to address issues in, you know, the portions of our community where we're seeing gun violence. So I'll turn it over to Chief Hudson, and with that, Mayor, I'll yield. Thank you.
All right. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Clarkston. As you all know, back on six seventeen, six nineteen, and six twenty five, we had three homicides, all within the Brockett Road Corridor. One was at Springdale Glen on six seventeen, the other one was six nineteen, what happened at Park one thousand, or, excuse me, Park one thousand, and then on six twenty five at Silver Oaks. We, our CID department has been actively working these cases. We have a lot of subpoenas out for their Instagram pages and what have you. We've got some leads, they're working. So we're working diligently on that. A lot of things have been transported down to GBI crime line, we're waiting on some DNA to come back. Hopefully, we will have, be able to make an arrest in, in these cases. As you saw, about two weeks ago, I sent interim City Manager Tammy Sattler Jones a memo in reference to gun violence questions and, and stuff, and I believe she sent it in her weekly report. I do have a meeting with my staff, along with the apartment complexes on Brockett Road Corridor, to include, they're going to reach out to Clarkson Station Apartments today and Park one thousand. We have a meeting scheduled for eleven A. M. on August twenty second of this month. We want to come, see if we can't come together. There's a lot of vacant apartments that are over at Springdale Glen, a lot of places that are, the fences are, there's cuts in the fence that we're talking about trying to get closed up. Two of our, one of our homicides from Silver Oaks, the guy was walking through the cut from Tahoe Village down to Springdale Glen, and he was ambushed in the cut right there that goes through, and it's because the fence has been cut through. So we're working on getting that taken care of. We are doing proactive patrols with, patrol is staying and saturating in the area. We're doing a lot of talking to people and seeing, you know, about information. These have all been sent to Crime Stoppers. So if you have any leads or know of anybody that has anything, if they would please call Crime Stoppers, and I'll stand for any questions.
Good. And thank you, Chief, for following up. Are we making them, in terms of those complexes, have flock cameras in addition?
So most of them on Brockett Road do have flock cameras. We would love to get with Park one thousand to have a flock camera. I know that Clarkson Station does, so yes, we, we've been in talks with them. Yes, ma'am.
And in terms of, and that might be even a city attorney question, can we mandate for those complexes to have additional security cameras as part of safety measures?
That's going to be a Stephen Quinn question.
That's what I said. Mr. Quinn, from a health and safety perspective and public safety, can we, as, as the chief is looking and having those conversations, make requirements that those complexes have additional security cameras beyond what the flock cameras will do? Because the flock only deals with a vehicle, but in terms of those additional cameras, is that something that we could potentially do, especially with the changes with the state law?
I think it's definitely something we can explore. I mean, there, there's a legal question there that I don't have a really firm answer to, just hearing the question now. I know that DeKalb County tried to put a rule like that in some years back, and I remember that it was challenged in court, and I honestly don't recall the outcome. So that's something that I'd like to look into for you and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Council, did you have any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. Oh, Councilman Carroll?
Do you think these are all just like related incidents, or do you think it's?
So it's, we believe that it was drug-related. They did have, I can't say that it's gang-related, they did have, our victims did have gang tattoos on them, but we're still looking into that. I don't believe that any of them are connected. But I will say, we had a shooting last week, the same, through the same cut, and I think you guys were made aware of it. Victim was forty-one years old, went, made it to, got shot in two places, non-life-threatening injuries, and he didn't want the police called. So tends to believe, you know, we tend to believe that, you know, he knows who did this to him, and it's getting people to come forward and talk.
Councilwoman Bell?
Thank you, Chief, for that overview. Can you tell me how many, what has been the shift or structure for the Police Department on that Brockett Corridor? We know that we've had this influx of frequent shootings, and stabbings, and other things, because we've been having those on that same corridor for quite some time.
We have. We, you know, in here, and I can go back, so in 2019, we had five homicides, and 2020, we had two homicides, 2021, two homicides, 2022, four homicides, and 2023, three homicides. Those three seem like a lot, because they all happened within two weeks time span. I know that we are doing proactive patrols down there. I have even had overtime, you know, paid for officers to come in on their days off for extra pay, and to come down and really saturate the area. We're out doing, we're walking the neighborhoods down there and, and trying to see what we can find out by talking to people.
Good. Yes.
Go ahead.
So Chief, are we staffed now?
Your microphone. Are we staffed, or are you guys?
So we still have two openings for patrol and two openings for sergeant. So technically, we're down four out of twenty-one.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you again for all the work the team is doing in the Police Department, and welcome our new employees, so thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll close out the City Managers' Report, and then we'll move forward with the City Attorney's Report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I do not have a report tonight.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move to Vice Mayor Johnson for Council remarks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the privilege of attending the city of Clarkston's Book Bag Drive, or Giveaway, however you want to put it. It was an awesome job by our new Parks Director. Thank you, Michael, for that. That was awesome. And I also had the pleasure on Sunday of attending the Love of Giving, Inc. They had a book bag drive as well. It was amazing as well. On Wednesday, the mayor and myself, we, on Tuesday, I attended National Night Out. Chief, you, you guys did an awesome job again, so thank you for that. And I did have the pleasure of meeting the Assistant Chief and the new detective. Welcome aboard. On Wednesday, the mayor and myself was at Indian Creek Elementary School, also with the Love of Giving, Inc. Foundation. We actually gave every student in that school, school supplies. It was an amazing, I mean, every student, so that was awesome. Thank you for assisting me, Madam Mayor. And I also would like to recognize two of our employees, Ms. Sattler Jones. I spoke with Cory Ford, who is on supervisor for our Public Works Department. He has, on July fourteenth, he had completed twenty-five years of service. So thank you, Cory, for your twenty-five years of service. And on July eleventh, our court clerk, Suzie Keys, completed nineteen years of service. So thank you, Suzie Keys. And with that, Madam Mayor, I complete my report.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Carroll? Okay. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, I was at the book bag giveaway at the park, and it was more than that. There was a bounce house and food and all of that, so the kids were thrilled with their book bags, and I think other things were given away that I wasn't even aware of. But yes, excellent event, very hot, but the turnout was excellent. And again, thank you to Michael with Parks.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Bell?
Thank you. So I attended Local Progress, which is a national convening of about four hundred local elected officials from around the country, where I was able to go through several trainings on housing justice and the Barrett Housing, that how they've been able to appropriate them across the country. We also talked about tax allocation, and we talked about immigrant justice, and I served on the advisory board, as well as I was re-elected as a leadership member for the Black Caucus on a national level, so I get to lead a hundred and fifty other black elected officials, and we get to learn from each other about self-preservation, but also best practices and lessons learned that they're executing on in their cities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So keep it brief. So just again, extend a warm welcome to our new staff members. So excited to have you all onboard. Just give a brief update, so we did have a Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee meeting, so just an update on that, the, you know, conversation on what to do with our various task forces and things like that, you know, it's, it's been a pretty large topic. We're hoping to have some recommendations nailed down at our meeting this month and for Council, hopefully, within the next work session. So just a brief update on that. So thank you to Vice Mayor Johnson, Councilmember Bell, and Mr. Crawford and Mr. Yon, who are a part of that conversation. And then I also attended National Night Out, so appreciate Chief Hudson and the rest of the Police Department for the work y'all did, putting that together. I do apologize, I do have one complaint. Y'all keep, I, I brought this up, I think, every year, the AC. I don't know what it needs to happen with that, if that's a Public Works conversation, but it was out again, so that could get resolved. I don't know, Mayor. Yeah.
All right. I think y'all can make a motion to do that for us, please.
Yeah, we have that kind of power.
Miss, next time. All right. Thank you all, and just to follow up. And just to follow up, I think Vice Mayor covered all the ones that we did. But we also attended the Town Hall, myself, Councilwoman Hood, and Vice Mayor Johnson for Clarkson Community Health Center. As you know, they're located here, and they're changing their business model, and they wanted to get community input about that. And so, we were happy to assist with that, as well as working with Women's Watch Africa in terms of their monthly food drive that they do within the city. I also participated with the Interstate 285 Initiative. So, just so you know what that is, is that they're looking at how they're making changes for 285 in terms of passengers and making transportation. Unfortunately, our wonderful state and our wonderful area does not like to be progressive in terms of utilizing MARTA. And we have seen what that has done to our community over the last 30 years. I like to call it the cross and the crucifix, right? Cross with the little rosary on the side. That's what is, that's what our transportation system looks like. And so, we're trying to catch up to something that we should have been doing a long time ago. And that's the unfortunate piece. So, they're looking at making changes in terms of bus routes with Cobb area, with the perimeter area. They've been working with our staff diligently, looking at the Tucker area, Indian Creek area, and even down to Panthersville area, to making commuting better. One of the other things that's happened is that, from the Gwinnett perspective, they have cut down the number of buses that they're going to allow to come into Atlanta. So, that means that they're gonna have to work together to figure out how to do this upgrades, and so light rail or whatever they're trying to do. The unfortunate piece is, as we know, any construction project is gonna take five to 10 years, right? To 20 to 30. So, they're trying to make modifications where they can, but I just want to make sure that you understood what that impact looks like, you know? And so, we have to make sure, in terms of communities, that we continuously push to make sure that transportation is available for everyone, because particularly in our community, where many of our residents have to travel two hours back and forth to go to work, having access to transportation to have additional good-paying jobs is something that's very critical for our community. So, we'll make sure, in terms of those updates, that you know about this, and we want to make sure that your voices are heard about this, because we all have to work together to improve transportation for the greater Atlanta area. And so, with that, I'll close that out, and we'll talk about public comments. So, any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comments. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes, and it's not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The City Council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly and timely manner. Clerk, Mrs. Mitchell, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Sean Waters.
Okay, Mr. Waters, and you have three minutes for your comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, distinguished City Council members, and our dedicated interim City Manager. I'm here today as a resident of Clarkson and on behalf of Clarkson Shores Corporation and its board to address concerns regarding the health, well-being, and management of Clarkson Lake and Crystal Lake Pond. Recently, we conducted two independent tests on the lake water quality due to concerns about possible contamination. The results were vastly different. DeKalb County watershed reported no issues with E. coli levels, while a private environmental testing vendor found a fecal coliform level of 130,000 CFU, or colony-forming units per 100 milliliters, and E. coli levels of 1,935 NPM per every 100 milliliter. Tonight, we want to make everyone aware of potential contamination and leakage of sewage into the lake. This issue threatens a natural resource, endangers local wildlife, and poses a potential risk to public health and safety. To address these concerns, we are implementing the following plan. Number one, additional testing will be performed by the Chattahoochee River Keepers to verify or refute previous testing results. Number two, if necessary, the county will be requested to conduct additional dye and smoke tests to determine if there is a leak from the county sewage system running under the dam separating the retention pond and the lake body. And number three, we've contacted Commissioner Ted Terry's office from DeKalb County Super District 6 and hope to collaborate on a long-term plan for the management and protection of Clarkson Lake for current and future residents. The Clarkson Shores Corporation is committed to keeping the city informed and involved in these processes as they impact many residents in our city. We look forward to further dialogue and discussion going forward, as well as possibly revisiting our collaborative partnership with the City of Clarkson by making the fishing dock available to the residents of both Clarkson and DeKalb County, thereby making the lake accessible for usage to the city and county residents. This would require the city to consider the following items. Providing liability insurance. Assuring the quality, health, and safety standards of the lake for fishing and consumption. Provide management, safety, and cleanliness, as well as signage and promotion in conjunction and partnership with the Clarkson Shores Corporation. Should the mayor's office, interim City Manager, or members of the council wish to discuss any of these details, myself and Clarkson Shores Corporation members are available for further discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and your interim City Manager and council members for your time.
Thank you so much. And please make sure that's available for our City Manager and forward that to her. Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up?
Lisa Williams.
Mrs. Mill Williams?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, interim City Manager. I am here to request more time. I would like for you to please give the historic property at Forty Oaks a chance to seek grant funding to help restore the home, the structure there, and make it something useful to the community. To my knowledge, we have not sought any grant funding for the property, although it is eligible for historic registration. And I believe that it does have a chance to get some funding that wouldn't burden the taxpayers and perhaps be able to restore it. So, I'm asking you to please allow some more time for the Historic Preservation Commission, the Environment and Transportation Committee, along with the city administration, to please do what needs to be done to seek that funding. I think we can try. You know, we don't know if we'll get it, but if we don't try, we don't know. So, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up?
Dean Moore.
Wait, when they finish, whoever signed up, we'll let you go.
Supposed to sign up. Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Here another committee report. I didn't see anything listed. I didn't get an email blast or anything about committee meetings. And I think it's important that the council take a leap of faith and disband these committees and get people in the community to populate them. When I hear a committee report, I never hear who were the experts that were invited to give testimony or to give pros and cons of whatever the subject might be. And so, I see this as being a silo of council members developing policy to go back to the council to advise them that doesn't include any outside source. So, I don't know what's going on, and I would like to attend those meetings. So, I hope that in the future, we can have better communication with the population of Clarkson to be able to attend these meetings. Now, in the Historic Preservation Commission, we've had a series of setbacks. I admit that during my term as council member, I thought that historic preservation was something that would take place, or that, you know, having it in our LCI and our future planning that we would put in there a house that was a historic home in downtown Clarkson. That doesn't make that a designated thing. Anybody can do what they want. Jamie famously said that if you own it, you can tear it down. I think we need to make some ordinances that will say that if you are gonna tear something down, you have a plan in place to put something back. And that has to be an approved plan. With COVID and Pat Davis-Moore's passed away, she was our chairperson. We've been unable to have a full commission. We've put out there a couple of times. I don't know if we've advertised well enough. Sounds like now we've got a couple of members. So, we may be able to start getting these grants, but that's what's holding us back, is having a third member on the commission. And I hope that you will consider the city and the way things have transpired over the years, and how we've had the COVID and the death and the different things that have set us back to vote against tearing this thing down. Put it off for a year, vote again next year, maybe, until we can see what we can do with a full staff commission. So, hopefully, that will happen, and carry on.
All right. Thank you. Who else do we have signed up?
Robin Sands.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Robin Sands. I live on Carroll Park Drive, and I have been, my daughter lives in Clark Estates. We cut through Forty Oaks on a regular basis, and I have admired that home since I moved here in 2020. I've also watched it gradually fall into disrepair, and it's been a very sad thing. One time, I walked through after the freeze in 2022 at the end of the year. There was water running in the house. I could see it pouring out the backside. It took over a week to get someone to come out and shut it down. It's been my understanding that this house would be restored. I would love to see it retained in some form or fashion. I would love to go after the historical grants, as Lisa has suggested. And I grew up in a, near a historical town when I was a child, and we saw many facades that were preserved. Well, the inside became something amazing for the community. We were talking about the children in the community, make it something, make it a place where they can learn about the nature preserve, learn about historical farming methods, learn about the garden that's built into the yard. It could be so much more than what it is right now. So, that is my concern, and please.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up?
I'm not sure of how to pronounce his name, but the citizen lives on Ponce, Delion.
Jim? No? No? Okay. So, take it away, Devin.
Okay, I'm fast. This time, I'm gonna be fast, because I didn't write my speech. Debbie Gathman, Mel Avenue. Number one, I'm very excited to have a meeting about gun safety and a gun commission or a discussion on that. I think it's key that small cities take the hand in that. And this brings me to, my next thing is, in the old days, which was not that long ago, the police chief, or somebody from the Police Department, would do a report at every meeting. So, we knew what the hell was going on. Like, I knew about these homicides just because I read them in the paper. But I want us to go back to that. I think it felt like hometown policing, and it also kept us abreast on what's going on. I love that. That brings me to the next thing about transportation, what you were talking about with MARTA. I've gone to a bunch of MARTA meetings and discussed this, but I also mentioned this with Susan. I think that Clarkson could do what Decatur's doing and consider an intra-bus or van system that would run between Decatur, Clarkson, and Tucker. I am visualizing it in a way that some of the Gwinnett cities did. I don't think it can happen tomorrow, because it's not in the budget, but I want us to work in that direction, and maybe MARTA would fund that. I don't know. I'm gonna, I talked to the Decatur person who runs the bus shuttle that they run, and they pay that guy's salary. He's like an employee. I don't know if we want to fool with that, but I just think that that would be an important thing. Last thing is, I would be very excited if we took charge of that lake. You know how I feel about us paying for the dam when we don't get to use the lake? I have hated that ever since I've lived here. I would love to see the fishing dock open back up. I'm really concerned, when I saw the letter that Sean put in next door, I was really concerned about that, because I'm one of the lake people that manages the lakes over in Tucker, you know, and turns in the results to the city. And those kind of figures are pretty darn scary. That sounds like a sewage leak. So, and I would be thrilled to see the city, and I know that there's liability, blah, 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 somebody drowned. But there's gonna be, there's liability in the swimming pool. I mean, that's what a city does. So, it's something I think I would love to see the city take charge of some of that. I have a boat. I want to put it on the lake. And I'm done talking about all that. And the last thing I want to say is, I am concerned that our newsletters, I hate to bitch about this, but it's kind of a small thing, but it's driving me crazy, is we do have a lot of committee meetings, and we do have things that happen. And sometimes I will look at the calendar, and it won't appear. Then I'll hear about it the next day. I wish that we had a newsletter like we used to have, and then it emailed out to everybody. I fill out that little email thing every single time I open up the website, but I never got a newsletter in my email. And I would be happy to help write it, because I write some of the newsletter for Trees Atlanta, so I know how to do that. But I really want us, all the citizens should get a newsletter every week, or every other week at least, to let us know when meetings are happening. I think people would join that dopey historical committee if they knew that they had been meeting another person, but nobody's talked about it the way that I would like to see. So, more communication, more communication, more communication.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that is on Ratanga's list of things to do, and I'm so looking forward to that. Okay. And we appreciate your communication. So, do we have anyone else? All right. Come on, Mr. Robert.
Madam Mayor, council members, and City Manager. When you first started, when you first started...
So, first, Mr. Robert, say your name.
Oh, I'm Robert Winfrey. I live at 3834 Norman Road, the house right beside the lake. They do all the Christmas stuff every year. Madam Mayor, when they first started doing all this work around the city of Clarkson, they told us that Norman Road, all the houses would have the decorative mailboxes. My side of the street, we don't have those decorative mailboxes. The other side have them, and this has been 15, 20 years ago, and nothing has ever happened about it. So, that's...
All right. Short list, I like that. Okay. Anyone else for the good and the order? Hearing no one else, we will close public comments. And again, thank you for all your recommendations, suggestions, and concerns. We appreciate hearing from you. With that, we will move into old business, which is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the Code Regarding Alcoholic Beverages to allow late-night sales for consumption on premises, subject to certain conditions. And I will allow Councilwoman Bell to give an overview, and then from there, we'll take a motion.
So, the overview is, this was referred to the Public Safety and Legal Committee. We had a detailed discussion in this month, in July. There were a list of recommendations around what the committee members thought were next steps as it relates to late-night ordinances, which led to a lot of, sorry, which led to the recommendation being that it was referred for me to consult with planning and zoning, as well as the city admin, to move forward with the list of recommendations that were brought forth in regards to late-night ordinance, how we govern it, the designation, the locations of those businesses that have those late-night hours, and if there should be a tier, and then also best practices from other cities. And that was as a result of that meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, at this time, I will take a motion from the council on how they want to deal with this particular item. Yes, Councilman Carroll?
I move that we table this item for 60 days.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we table item 6A for 60 days. Is there any discussion? Yes, Vice Mayor Johnson.
I would like to know why.
I just don't think in its present form, it's desirable to pass, but I think there is a version of a late night ordinance that was limited to a particular district that had particular conditions that could be desirable to pass. So that's why I want to table it. So hopefully we can create that ordinance through the committee and staff work in the next 60 days.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Hearing none, are you ready for the question? All in favor of tabling item number 6A, which is to consider an ordinance amending chapter three of the code regarding alcoholic beverages to allow late night sales for consumption on the premises, subject to certain conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion is passed. We'll move on to the consent agenda item and for everyone, consent agenda is when we've talked about this at a work session and there's no further deliberation and all council members are willing to move forward with this item. So with that, we only have one item for consent and that is item 7A, which is to consider a change order for additional work scope at 1056 Vaughn Street driveway apron in the amount of $2,840 to be funded out of SPOSS 1. So at this time, I'll take a motion.
I have a motion.
Thank you, Councilman Perkins.
I move that we approve the consent agenda singular to consider a change, which includes item 7A to consider a change order for additional work scope at 1056 Vaughn Street driveway apron in the amount of $2,840 to be funded out of SPOSS 1.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to approve on the consent agenda, a change order for additional work scope at 1056 Vaughn Street driveway apron in the amount of $2,840 to be funded out of SPOSS 1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. We'll move to 8A, which is new business, to consider a resolution approving a contract with Pariani Construction to perform renovation work at 736 Park North for use as city administrative space for a term of six months in an amount not to exceed $480,000 to be funded out of the general fund, federal seeds fund and tenant improvement allowance. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the construction cost for the renovation at the new administrative office building. As many of you are aware in the public that our current location, which is across the street where most of us are for administrative offices and also this building, we have severely outgrown it. And so we are in need of some additional office space. And also our police department will be moving to the new location as well. And the council back in June approved a construction budget not to exceed $480,000. We are recommending that those funds be taken from three specific areas. And I would like to note for the council that there were a few number, numbers that were offed. The project cost that has been given to us from Pariani Construction, who is the company that we are recommending, we use, Pariani is currently on the state contract, so it doesn't require us to do a bid because we're piggybacking off of the state contract. And they gave us a project cost of $474,984, which is below the approved contract amount of $480,000. However, we, and just in case, Mayor, there are, and Council, there are contingencies. We did do a breakdown, which we're currently proposing, $218,507 come from the general fund, $165,060 that would be out of the tenant improvement allowance. That's what the owner of the building at 736 is giving us toward the construction for the renovations to the city. So that is not coming out of the city's coffers. That is money that the building owner is giving to us. And then the other funds would be $96,433 out of the federal seizure funds through the police department. Those would have to be specifically used over in the portion of the building that is specifically for the police department because those have specific uses. And that totals up to be $480,000. Again, our project cost is 474,984, 474,984, and we are recommending approval with the understanding that we will not exceed $480,000. Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, I'll take a motion for this item. Councilman Carroll.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the resolution approving the contract with Pariani Construction to perform renovation work at 736 Park North for use as city administrative space for a term of six months in amount not to exceed $480,000 to be funded out of the general fund, federal teacher fund and tenant improvement allowance.
I second.
All right. It has been properly moved and seconded to approve a resolution approving a contract with Pariani Construction to perform renovation work at 736 Park North for use as city administrative space for a term of six months in an amount not to exceed $480,000 to be funded out of the general fund, federal seeds fund and tenant improvement allowance. Is there any further discussion? Councilwoman Hood? Oh, no. Okay. Okay. Sorry. No, no discussion? Okay. Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you. The next item is item 8B, which is to consider a resolution awarding a contract to the most responsive and responsible bidder, Southern Demolition LLC for the demolition of the two-story house at Forty Oaks Nature Preserve in the amount of $39,750. And so, City Manager? Oh, we'll have Mr. Moody.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Moody, our purchasing consultant, will go over this agenda item. Thank you.
As explained during work session, this was just the first bid to do demolition of this two-story structure and Southern Demolition was the lowest and most responsive. And I believe in your package, you'll see where they did make notations on what they would have to do. We did also request them to notify the local residents if approved, this demolition would take place at $39,750.
And what's the extension of this contract in terms of?
So the verbiage we have, we have 90 days. Well, the city has 90 days to make a decision. And after that point, if past that term, we'll just have to reject everything and go back out to bid if you do not accept it.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Can you, for the record?
Wait, Council Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. So we'll make sure in terms of questions if we need to after we make the motion. And so let's proceed with the motion for this item.
Question about the way the motion needs to be phrased for Mr. Quinn.
Okay, Mr. Quinn.
So, and Mr. Quinn, if, in the scenario that we were to delay this or postpone this decision a little bit, how would we need to craft the motion in a way that makes sure we don't go beyond the 90 days, you know, this contract extent or sort of guidelines to the contract?
Well, I think one, I don't have in front of me the date that we opened the bids. Hopefully Mr. Moody has access to that, but basically you would look to the council meeting that's within the 90-day period. And if you wanted as much time as you could have, then you would choose the last one and just table, make the motion to table this agenda item to consideration on that day.
Okay. Mr. Moody, do you know when our deadline will be on?
The bid open date was July 9th, so that would give until workshop at the end of October and that first meeting in November. So you do have that time. And we did reach, I did reach out to the recommended contractor. He would hold that price that we're looking at now. The backside of it is depends on what the landfill would charge. If they have a rate increase, then that would just be an additional.
Okay. All right. So at this time, I'll take a motion.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Woody.
We slipped one through, but let's just go ahead and make the motion. And then we'll have that part of discussion.
I would, I move to table this item for the 90 days, I guess, beginning July 9th. And that's my motion. I need more information, so if somebody, give me a second.
The regular meeting in November is on November 7th, which is a Thursday because of the national election.
Okay. So Councilwoman Hood, do you want to reconsider your motion because I wasn't clear with what you were making as far as the motion?
Yes. Move to table this item for 90 days and to the meeting on November 7th.
So are you wanting to table this not to go beyond November 7th? Is that what you're trying to do? I just want to make sure because it's.
But if I, you know, there's a critical piece of information that Mr. Woody said, but he didn't say it. I don't have it. He said they're willing to extend it, so I don't know what that means.
Okay. So is there a second to that motion?
No, because the date is wrong.
Okay. So is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? There is no second to the motion, therefore the motion is dropped. So at this time, I will entertain another motion.
So is the 90 days?
Okay. So I think some, yeah. So we just, I think we have some questions because it needs to be cleared. So let's clear, when does the 90 date from the start to end?
The 90 days is from the bid open date. However, through email that I shared with interim city manager, they will hold their cost until November 12th. So I did get a little extra into the 90 days to make sure that decision was.
Okay. So that would be the November council, November council meeting, which would be on a Thursday. So for us to make sure in terms of the existing bid, the way that it is now, without having any issues, we can extend this until November 7th.
Yes.
If that is the pleasure of the council in terms of your option of extending or tabling it, as Attorney Quinn said.
And I think that's, so shall I make my motion again?
Yes, you can.
I move that we table this item for 90 days or from July 9th to November 7th. Are those dates correct?
Okay.
The 90 days part isn't true, but you can just table it.
You can just table it until the November 7th council meeting. Okay. So is that?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hood, I'm going to let you do it again. All right. Let's go.
I move to table this until the council meeting on November 7th.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded to table items 8A, 8B until the November council meeting. Is there any further discussion or clarity?
I have a question.
Okay. So you got cut off, so yes, go ahead first.
Thank you. Well, thank you for answering my question earlier. My question is, why are we holding it 90 days? Do you have a plan? Further plan? I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes. We will have a plan. We are having a joint meeting of Historic Preservation and Environmental Committee. We want to look at where this was left off last year as far as what additional items need to be done. We want to discuss in greater depth how this building would be used and what our path would be to getting grants to assist with this funding. So we are not asking for funding in these three months. We are asking for delaying the demo, which, from which there is no going back, while we review all of the information we have up to this date and give a timeline for how we would move forward.
Okay. Thank you for that. And Councilman Carroll and Councilwoman Bell, thank you.
So just speaking for myself, in order to delay this further past November 7th, I would need to see really concrete progress in actual path to get grants sufficient to fund the entirety of the renovation. So I'm just saying, you know, in November, we have a plan that we might do something in the future. For me, that's not sufficient. For me, I need to see, okay, this has been registered or is the process being registered? These are the grants we can get. This is how much the grants will be. This is how much renovation it will cover. I don't want to see something like that. I don't want to hear, you know, we're thinking about, you know, possibly applying for other grants in the future because that's what we've been talking about for the past five or six years. There just has not been progress in the meantime. That place just keeps getting worse. It keeps deteriorating every day and it could be used for something beneficial to the community if that's not renovating this space and it would need to be a new space, which is the other alternative. So that's kind of where I stand. I'm willing to give an extension to see if the grants exist, to see if the process, if this can be registered, this whole place, but not an indefinite extension.
Okay. Councilwoman Bell?
So at this time, me and council, I would like to use a point of personal privilege. I want to, I would like to ask Mr. Kaiser to come up and give as it relates to Mrs. Hood's statement around timeline, a timeline of what we have done as a body to get to this point, so that it's clear and we can dispel any disinformation around what has been done by this body in regards to this property on that we're discussing. Is that okay with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kaiser.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I put together a handwritten timeline of where this project started upon donation of the land and the house from DeKalb County to the city of Clarkston. So I'm going to give you some years and some months. And again, I may be off by a month or two, but it's going to give you, I think, a pretty good perspective. 2017, former city manager Keith Barker and I exchanged a number of emails regarding the house and the property. And I have those on record. The conversation was essentially one of how do we clean up the site from all the invasive species, which we actually accomplished about a year and a half after that, while he was still in office, while he was still in city manager. And also questions about the condition of the house and the historical nature of the house and what it would cost to renovate. No details provided to Mr. Barker at that time. We just had several email conversations. 2018, I prepared a detailed memo to city manager Gomez on the cost to rebuild and or renovate. That was in 2018. 2020, there was an updated memo provided to city manager Gomez on the cost to rebuild or reconstruct. Changes changed, cost changed from 2018 to 2020, obviously. Between April and June of 2021, I prepared a scope of services for asbestos and lead assessment and sent that out to several environmental firms to obtain a quote. Those quotes came back and the council selected United Consulting to do the work. Those results came back, as I think we remember, and those results were that there was asbestos on the exterior of the house, asbestos in the shingles, asbestos in the attic and lead at various locations throughout the house, both in the original house as well as the remodels additions that occurred in 1950, 1960 and 1970. In July of 2021, I, as well as members of the historical committee and a few citizens, came to the house and we walked through the house just to observe the condition of the house in 2021. A lot of pictures taken at that time and so that's. A lot of pictures taken at that time, and so that's what occurred between April and June of 2021. Actually, it occurred in July of 2021. August of 2021, council memo addressed to the, regarding the selection of architectural firm to go through an RFQ process. Council shortlisted the firms in August of 2021 to select Sizemore Floyd Architects to look at the architectural features of the house. September 2021, a memo to city manager Kwaye on the shortlisted firms. And so again, Sizemore Floyd was selected. April 2022, walked the building with the architect, as well as several members of council, and I think that some members of the Historical Committee, along with Sizemore Floyd. March of 2024, work session, presentation on, the title of the presentation was "Renovate or Demolish and Reconstruct the Forty Oaks House, Farmhouse." At that time, I utilized the 2020 numbers, did not give an update. The memo clearly reflects that. 2020 numbers were $350,000 to renovate the existing building. April of 2024, the Transportation and Environmental Committee met to discuss SPOSS 2 program. And in that agenda, we discussed the Forty Oaks House and the demolition of the building. Estimated costs were given to the committee at that time of $350,000, again in $2020. So let me make a few other statements here real quick. I'm not an architect, I'm a civil engineer. But I do have some history on my side. The history is City Annex. So here's the difference between the two historic homes. In 2013, the City Annex was purchased for $135,000, give or take a few thousand. We estimated, the architect, the contractor we selected in a design-build approach, and I estimated the cost to renovate would be right around $250,000. Council said move forward. The end-up cost, the final cost, was over $300,000. I think it was 325, 330 or so at that time. So the project was completed, I think, in 2014. That house, City Annex, was remarkably in good condition. No renovations to the house since 1875, other than a rear sunroom that was installed on the house. Everything else, everything else was essentially intact. No asbestos, no lead, only mold remediation, both in the house and in the crawl space. We submitted an application to the Georgia Trust Historic Homes, as well as Oshippo, the State Historic Preservation Office. They came out, reviewed our house, the City Annex house, and said it was a remarkable house, given that no renovations had occurred since 1875, other than the rear sunroom by the Morris family. Contrast that with the Forty Oaks House. Forty Oaks House has numerous renovations, numerous additions, significant amount of environmental concerns. And the $2020 that I prepared was over $300,000, $250,000 in 2020 numbers. That's the difference between the two homes. So applying for federal or state historic preservation funds, in my estimation, would be very problematic. Because they're gonna come in, they're gonna look at that, and they're gonna say, wow, a lot of renovations to that house over time. Based upon my experience with the Annex, where they specifically said, the committee, State Historic Preservation Committee, as well as Georgia Trust for Historic Homes, both remarked how wonderful the City Annex house was because there were no additions to the house. That's the difference between the two homes, plus all the environmental issues. I think, and you can have pros and cons of both sides about this. There is valid points on both sides. I'm looking at it from funding possibilities and completing and achieving 100% funding for renovation of that house will be, the chance of that is nil to none. The time period to accomplish that in terms of receiving funds, federal funds, is over 18 months, must probably two years, if not longer than that. Again, based upon my knowledge of going after federal funds in all categories, in all, all infrastructure categories. And so, again, is it possible? Yes, it is. But you won't get 100% monies to renovate that house. Thank you.
Thank you. No, that, no. But I'm sorry, Mr. Moore. No comment, no comment, thank you. Wait, 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 wait. She still had a moment. I'm gonna let Councilwoman Bill. You're done, okay. So you're done. Okay, raise your hand.
We are simply asking for 90 days. We will do everything we can within the 90 days to bring you a plan that shows how this building can be saved or how a portion of this building can be saved. So, 90 days.
Okay, and any other comments for Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure who this question is for, but what is the current cost of my, per month to maintain the property as is? Do we know that number?
I'm sorry, what?
No, that's for city manager.
I know specifically that the fencing around the house, it cost us $500 a month. But I'm not sure if there's any other expenses associated. But specifically, we have to, we're renting that fence to use it there, and it's $500 a month.
Okay, do we, do we get any revenue from any of the, like, MOUs or anything related to, I know there's some nonprofit groups that are using it? I believe we do.
No.
No, no.
Yeah, there is a farming community that's using it.
Yeah, so global growers used to have a partnership in terms of using that. But I think because of the issues that they had with the asbestos and when that came up.
They're, they're still there. But I don't think they're paying us anything, but they're still there.
Oh yeah, they're not, yeah, okay. Okay, okay. All right, any other comments? All right, you ready for the questions? Okay. All in favor to table till the November 8th, 7th? 7th. Council meeting, item 8A, 8B, I'm sorry, 8B, to consider a resolution awarding a contract to the most responsive and responsible bidder Southern Demolition LLC for the demolition of the two-story house at Forty Oaks Nature Preserve in the amount of $39,750 to be funded out of SPOSS 2. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so the motion did not pass, therefore, I'll entertain another motion.
I have a motion, but I gotta check the date. All right, I move that we postpone the approval of this contract. Sorry, I just got the wording wrong, I had to check the date on this. So I move that we postpone the consideration and the resolution awarding the contract to the most responsive and responsible builders Southern Demolition LLC for the demolition of the two-story house at Forty Oaks needs to preserve in the amount of $39,750 to be funded out of SPOSS 2 to the October 1st council meeting.
Okay, to the October 1st council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Are you ready for the? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, some further discussion. So I'm pushing this back a little bit, in my opinion. One, though, I'm very surprised at the way that this conversation has happened, especially for members of, appointed members of committees. This item has been under discussion, obviously, thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for your report, for, you know, much longer than, you know, one year. The latest, I think, movement on it was from the Environmental and Preservation Committee in June, on June 6th of last year. And as far as I can tell, I know since I have been on council, we discussed this at our staff retreat. I've only received one email, that was in May, even raising the question. And so as I look at the work that our staff are putting into things, as I look at the processes that we have set up in the city to getting things done, my, my challenge to the members of the committees that have brought this up is, if you care about this, respectfully, do the work. Because our staff are doing the work. I can only make decisions based on the input that I get from the community. And when I get emails, the work session before vote, that's been discussed at multiple meetings this year, that tells me that this is a rush job. There were pictures that were shared online of the, of the house not in its current condition. I went out there this week, actually, just to look at it myself. It is not in good condition. It looks nothing like the pictures that were shared online. And so while I am willing to give an extension, similar to Mr. Carroll, I have a high expectation that we are going to get much more than general bullet list points of things that could be done, but specific grants that could be used to fund this, the application process, the realistic, you know, deadlines associated with those, and the contribution, if any, required by the city. I also expect that the HPC, I have not received any applications. I'd be more than willing to vote to appoint someone to fill, so that the HPC has a quorum. Again, if we're concerned about, and thank you, Ms. Robin, I'm aware that you apply. You know, so, so again, you know, if, if we're concerned about these things, we can't let a committee go for years, you know, without having, you know, the, the motion needed to save these things proactively. I can't, in good faith, with good leadership, continue to lead our staff in one direction and then pull back right at the last minute. And I just ask respectfully that you do the same. So that's, that's the background. I think this gives us time to look at the realistically adoptions out there. Hopefully, it, it gives you guys a new fire, you know, those who want to see this. You know, I love history as well. And, but I also, we have to balance that with the other needs of the city, too. So I think this gives you an opportunity to, to go for it. But keep in mind, we can't come back to this in October and it be nebulous suggestions, or sort of, we either might be funding, or well, somebody got a grant. You know, we, we need details. It also, one final thing, gives us an opportunity to, to go back and really establish the timeline of events and maybe set the record straight on a few things and how things transpired, just to honor folks that have put in work, that have gone out, that have been, been doing this on both sides of this conversation, to make sure that as a public, we're, we're not getting angry about things that maybe are a little more complicated than, than might first appear. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, are you ready for the question? All of those in favor to postpone for consideration of resolution awarding a contract to the most responsive and reasonable bidder, Southern Demolition LLC for the demolition of the two-story house at Forty Oaks Nature Preserve in the amount of $39,750 to be funded out of SPOSS 2, no later than the October 1st council meeting? Is that correct? Okay. All say, all in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? The motion passed, did you?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, motion passed, okay, so we'll move on for this.
Thank you all.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on to item 8C, which is to consider a resolution to adopt the City of Clarkston's Livable Centers Initiative Greenway Trail Planning and transmit the study to the Atlanta Regional Commission. Mr. Kaiser?
On a happier note. So as I presented and as Perkins will presented last week at work session, we'll let Sarah do her thing here in a minute. I told her to keep it short and sweet, shorter than the work session last week. So what we're asking for is not just a adoption of the resolution, adoption of the study, but also allowing staff to move forward with preparing a scope of services for engineering and surveying and right-of-way acquisition, to allow us to move forward with that, select some, a firm before the end of the year, so that we're off and running in January in the preparation of plans for Phase 1 as defined in the Greenway Study Report. And so it's really a two-pronged decision by council tonight. So Sarah, are you online?
Sarah?
She was, but people.
Her hand is raised.
Her hand. Okay. Sarah?
Can you hear me?
Yes, okay, we're ready for you. Short and sweet.
Okay, all right, will do. And apologies for not being there in person, I didn't want to get anyone else sick. So we can go to.
Everybody's okay.
Everybody's fine. You can keep going.
Okay, can we, can we go to the next slide, please? And we can skip the agenda, we can, this is just recognizing our project team, the site context, the original routes we were asked to consider, which have since changed into a more refined set of routes. Next slide, please. I will go through the proposed trail route and our goals and evaluation process, and then talk about some phasing. So next slide, please. So we really worked with the community to create goals for the Greenway based on nature, connectivity, equity and resilience, and cost and feasibility. All of these had individual metrics that we scored each trail segment on that resulted in a preliminary route we received feedback from the community on. Next slide, please. And this is just showing that detailed set of metrics. We measured everything using GIS and a lot of different other methods to make sure that we had the best result for the preliminary route. Next slide, please. So this is how it scored originally. You can see the routes along the streets and the creek scored the best, whereas the routes along the highway scored much lower. Next slide, please. So based on public feedback and additional site visits, this is the resulting route. You can see that it's much more refined, has a lot more trail spurs into all of the apartment communities on, you know, along the creek and those areas. But this is a pretty long set of trails. I think it works out to like 6.8 miles, so it will need to phase in. And so we have a phasing plan in the document that describes how that will work. Next slide, please. And this is just showing a before version, looking east towards Montreal Road. Next slide. And this is the after version, where you can see that people living in the plantation condominiums would have access to the trail, and the creek could be cleaned up, and there is a lot more access to nature. Next slide. And then this is Montreal Road as it is today, facing north where the creek crosses under the, the bridge. Next slide. And this is showing what it could look like with a trail or wider sidewalk running along Montreal Road, a potential trailhead where Phase 1 begins. So our recommended Phase 1 begins where the creek intersects Montreal Road and runs northeast towards Friendship Forest Wildlife Sanctuary. Next slide, please. So the main chunk of the, the trail comes in three phases. Phase 1 is creating about a 0.8 of a mile route that goes from Montreal Road over to Wild Circle Road. And we have the SPOSS 2 funding for surveying, engineering, and right-of-way acquisition. Phases 2 and 3 would connect from Phase 1 up to Rocket Road. And we have, or Larry has applied for congressional district spending from the Senator Wardock's office to fund the engineering for that. Phases 4, 5, and 6 would expand the Greenway to other routes and connections to adjacent jurisdictions, further increasing the reach of the Greenway. Next slide, please. And this is just some illustrations of some of those future phases. These particular versions would require coordination with GDOT. The one on the left shows how it could run under the overpass on Rocket Road. The one on the bottom right shows what it could look like. The one on the bottom right shows what it could look like on Ponce de Leon Avenue, running over 285. And then the one on the top right shows how it could look set off from Highway 78, along some of the apartment complexes. Next slide, please. And, next slide, please. So, you know, with new trails and greenways, there often comes economic development, so we want to be proactive in how we think about ensuring long-term affordability for Clarkston residents. Our main recommendation is to conduct a housing study, to revisit the housing element of the comprehensive plan. And in this housing study, you could look at new initiatives like land trusts, anti-displacement funds, and small business support, or look at the ability to use existing programs like rental protections, and further use of tax credits, like Lytech for affordable housing, or accessing an affordable housing fund. And then considering policy changes to the zoning ordinance, I know it just went through an update, but considering inclusionary zoning requirements, particularly along the trail corridor, to make sure a certain amount of affordable housing is constructed in redevelopment. Next slide, please. Some other recommendations we've heard from the community were having green space along the trail routes. Two of the locations that came up are already owned by the city, and one of them is not. And this location is 3489 Hill Street, which is right along the creek, behind Thrift Town, where the proposed trail would, would run over to connect to McCaswell Wood Lane. Next slide, please. And then there's also, you know, funding and partnerships to get the funding. Any kind of grants would require partnerships with a nonprofit, and there's federal funding the city can apply for. And so, in our document, we have a funding pipeline that the city can use to track grants over the next few years. Next slide, please. And the 100-day action plan, which is a requirement of the LCI, focuses on enabling Phases 1 through 3, through getting the funding in place, and then particularly for Phase 1, starting on that RFP that Larry Kaiser mentioned, about getting the engineering and right-of-way acquisition underway. Next slide, please. And as I alluded to earlier, this is the Phase 1 segment. You can see where it starts at Montreal Road, near the creek, and runs to the north, up to Wild Circle Road, connecting into apartment complexes and Friendship Forest. And then, just a few images here about safety elements, making sure the trail is safe at all times of day, providing access to apartment communities, but making sure that they have restricted access to the trail, providing trash receptacles, and lighting at night, so that it's safe to use all through the day. Next slide. And then thinking about wayfinding and placemaking, both static signs and digital signs that can be updated with new information, public art, and seating in different forms, and the potential for community gardens. Next slide. Next one, please. And so, we are here at the end of the upcoming milestones, where we're looking for plan adoption. So, I believe that concludes all of the slides, and I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions at this time? Thank you again so much for all the hard work of this team. We really appreciate everything that, yes, please give them a round of applause. I can, I can honestly say that, that they have done the most in terms of community engagement over the last year, year and a half with this project. So, kudos to you for all the work that you have done, and being a collective group to make sure the voices of a community are heard. So with that, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Have a motion.
Yes, Councilwoman Bell?
I move to adopt the City of Clarkston's Livable Cities Initiative Greenway Trail Planning, and submit the study to the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded to adopt the City of Clarkston's Livable Centers Initiative Greenway Trail Planning, and transmit the study to the Atlanta Regional Commission. Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move to the next item, which is 8D, and that is to consider the use of SPOS 2 funds, and the amount of $100,000 for the matching funds of the Atlanta United GA 100 Pitch Grant, interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Duncan is going to address this item.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. And I will be brief, trying to get home to catch some of this track and field.
Be careful.
We've been working with our grant coordinator on applying for Atlanta United Georgia 100 Matching Pitch Grant. And that grant is to help us to upgrade our fields, our soccer fields. So, we were having discussions, and we wanted to use the grant for some field lights for Mylum Park. And I think that would definitely help us when it comes to expanding our programs. So we're hoping, in the near future, to start a soccer program. And you know, in the fall and winter months, it gets dark very quickly. And so we're looking to add lights to the field, so that we can have practices in the evening times, and then also games as well. So, the grant goes from $10,000 to $100,000, and we're asking for the $100,000 matching grant for the lights, for the fields. And we want to apologize to y'all. We, I know some guidelines with grants, when it comes to the commitment of the matching funds, sometimes ask for it after we're rewarded for the grant. And then we realized this week, that part of the application process, that they needed the commitment for the funding within the application, when we turn it in, and it's due tomorrow. So that's why we were asking for this to be added to the agenda, and we thank y'all for the consideration to have it placed on the agenda today for approval. So we are asking for the $100 match grant.
Okay.
I'm sorry, $100,000 match grant.
Okay, match grant, okay. And this is to come from what SPOS category?
SPOS 2.
What category?
Now, I'm not sure, because I saw your question there, but I'm not sure. I think the interim City Manager can answer that question.
Mayor, the category is cultural facility, recreational facility, or historical facility.
I don't know if that's the right match for that one.
Recreational facility.
It is, it's a recreational.
Recreation facility?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, pardon me.
Okay, okay. All right, go ahead, any other questions for this one? And it's just the lights, right?
Yeah, just for...
Just lights?
Just lights, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Bell?
Just a point of clarity, this is about a letter of commitment, correct?
Yes.
So this is just about the letter committing that the city will match the grants, not necessarily asking for a $100,000 match grant. This is for the letter for the application for the grant process. I think that needs to be clear, because this is just about us making a motion on agreeing to the commitment in the letter of commitment to move forward with the application process.
Correct.
Okay.
And we also need to make sure, and thank you for clarifying that category, because I want to make sure wherever, we have to account for all of those dollars too. So if it does come through, we need to make sure that that money is allocated, and won't cause any problems. So, thank you for that clarification as well. Any other questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Have you all given a good estimate of how much it would cost to actually do the lighting? Would it be $200,000?
Yeah, so right, yeah, right now, the estimate is right around $200,000. So, we, we, the city will, will have the $100,000, and then the grant would be $100,000. So it could be give or take, but that's where the estimate is right now.
Okay. Are there any other costs associated with lighting? I'm assuming we're talking the upper field at Mylum Park?
Well, the estimate includes everything that will come with the lighting, the, the poles, the wiring, the installation. So that's where we are right now.
Okay. But that, but that's soup tonight, if lights, $200,000 later, they're there in Mylum Park. Okay. And are, are these grants associated with the small kid-sized grant, uh, fields, or are they, with, with the whole field up there, which is not a mini field? Would it be to light all of that, or just an area for a mini field?
Just, just the upper fields, right now.
Okay, so, just for clarity, for people to understand, what is the upper field versus the lower field?
The lower field, okay. So the upper field is the field, I call it the upper field, is the field that's on top at Mylum Park, the big field, that you see the soccer goals out there, where everybody plays soccer.
And it's fenced.
And it's fenced in.
So it's near Popular and East Avenue? There's the back parking lot?
Yes, yes. And then the lower field is right behind the pool area.
Right, off of Norman.
Off of Norman, correct.
Okay. All right, and this is just the lights?
Just the lights.
Just the lights. And you, in terms of what we're doing today, is just saying as a council, we're just gonna include a letter for your application?
Correct.
To do the lights?
Correct.
Or, yes, to, to ask for the lights, and we need to just match up to?
Correct.
$100,000.
Yes.
And I have one more question for the city manager.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let someone else have.
She's still answering her question. Oh, okay.
Okay, go ahead, vice.
Oh, you did state that it's for lighting, but our parks close at dusk, and you said it will give us an opportunity to expand programs. Are we considering evening programs?
Yeah, so when we have scheduled programs, then the park will stay open beyond dusk.
Gotcha.
Right. But it will still close if we didn't have any programs scheduled, yes.
Could they be sold and wired?
All right, and so, next, did you have a question, Councilwoman?
Yes. Interim City Manager, you noted that in the SPOS allocation that we did earlier this year, there are certain categories, and, like transportation and so on. The, so the category of cultural facilities, recreation facilities, and historic facilities, we, we allocated 3.49 to that, 3.44 to that. Now, did, did we do that by type of projects? Didn't we have type of projects for that? And if so, can you, can you read that all for us?
Are you talking about in that specific category?
In that category.
Okay, I'm looking at the sheet that was included with the SPOS, I guess back when the city decided that we were gonna do the SPOS, and you guys were looking for your buckets. But the category that currently is entitled cultural facility, recreational facility, and historical facility, in the $3,449,196, the listed projects are 3520 Montreal Court parcel, 2.7 acres purchased in 2023, 3601 Cabo Mill Lane, the parcel number and its 2.9 acres adjoining Friendship Forest, located within Wild Creek Apartment Complex, with a street access off of Wild Circle, Mylum Park Pavilion and Bathroom Updates, upgrades to Forty Oaks property, and splash station pad areas need to consider access and security.
Okay. All right, so we got that covered. So is there any other discussion, are you, are you ready for the, the motion?
I got one discussion.
You want?
Yeah, I got one more thing I want to say.
Okay.
So just for clarity, because I don't want people to get confused about what just took place, right? This is about a letter of commitment from the City of Clarkston. The city admin has brought it to the city council's attention for visibility and for the public awareness. But this is just for the application process. We haven't gotten any funds, we haven't moved any funds, there are no matching funds just yet. The only thing that the city is saying in the grant application, is that we will commit to $100,000 for a matching grant. We haven't gotten anything. I just want to make sure that people are clear.
That is correct.
About where we are.
That is correct.
Now, move forward with the motion.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I got the motion.
Okay.
So I move that, this is written all crazy, I move that we commit to a letter of commitment for the use of SPOS 2 funds, and the amount of $100,000 for the matching funds for the Atlanta United Georgia 100 Pitch Grant for the application. Who does the application go to?
It's, it's the Arthur Blank Foundation.
To the Arthur Blank Foundation.
I second.
Thank you.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded that we commit to the SPOS 2 funds, and the amount of $100,000 for the matching funds for the Atlanta United 100 Pitch Grant for the Arthur Blank Foundation.
Application.
Application. Is there any further discussion? Okay. You ready for the question? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed say nay? Motion passed. All right, we'll move on to item... All right, we love pitches, okay. So we'll move on to item 8E, which is to consider a resolution approving agreement between the City of Clarkston and Shannon Willow Art LLC, to bring in art installation called Heart of Mother Earth, at Trailside Green Park, located on Church Street. And so for this particular item, I know this was moved and seconded, Shannon, if you want to come up and just kind of give an overview of what, what it is, and so that the public knows, while we're here.
Greetings, everyone. Thank you, council. Greetings, city. I'm Shannon Willow. I've brought public art to Clarkston for many years, since 2013 was my original project. And I'm so thrilled to announce that I just won a big national award, a grant to bring a sizable project to Clarkston, and the Trailside Green Park is the perfect place for this So I know that you have received a little bit of information, happy to answer any questions. There will be a civic engagement piece to this, where we will be planting a wildflower meadow together, and educating the public on sustainability practices, and taking better care of the environment, better care of the earth, and therefore taking better care of one another. So, this is, yes, Mr. Carroll?
Could you just explain a little bit more about what the project is? I don't know if all the public has seen the packet.
Certainly, so for four years, I've been, most people know me as the muralist in Clarkston. For four years, I've been studying three-dimensional work, and I've created a whole series of, it's called Green Thy Heart series, and it's all about these small sculptures that hang from the ceiling, or hang in the forest, that are all about how are you taking care of Mother Earth, how are you taking care of one another, by the way you take care of Mother Earth? And it's about greening your own heart, in your own lifestyle, when no one else is watching. So, these studies have been, this grant is called Radical Unity Georgia. The national funders are the mediator foundation, they're private funders that have not been disclosed yet. And it was an open call for Georgia artists, and I was one of the four chosen artists for this, very quick turnaround of this project, Radical Unity, to bring everyone together during this great time of division, if you will. And I'll just leave it at that. So, that's what the grant's about, and this is really a project very close to my heart, because I'm a huge environmentalist. Some of you may know that from my previous work. And I would love to see this not only be just a pilot project, basically, for, one, bringing public art projects back to Clarkston, but also pairing them with pollinator gardens and environmental efforts to just take better care of one another, and better, better care of our Mother Earth. She's always giving to us, and the question is, what are we giving back? So that's really what this series is about, Green Your Heart, Green Thy Heart, with a reverence and a sacred piece to this. So, very excited about this. The piece is gonna be built... The piece is going to be built out of, it's going to have a metal structure. I'll be hiring Simone Wilson to build the frame. So she's another Clarkston resident and local artist. And then we'll be basically skinning the frame with wood and moss and fabricated mushrooms. So it's basically a giant version, about eight feet, of these studies that I've been doing for the last three years.
Okay. And part of why you wanted it on the agenda was you have a tight?
Very tight. Everything has to be done by October 6th. So, yeah, it was like, wham, here, they picked us, and you know, we have twice-a-month meetings with the funders, and it's a very tight, like, let's do it. So that's why I thank you for making this happen tonight. I wouldn't have been able to wait another month to secure my location because I have obligations to my funders. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
And so what, and so there, from what in terms of any obligation to the city?
So the total award is 15K. I've asked for a $1,500 stipend to cover admin costs and all the, it takes to reach out and get a lot of plant donations. I've already had hours and hours of meetings with people to do donations. I also work part-time for the Ray Highway. So I'm a living lab manager assistant, so the pollinator garden will basically be mostly donated by the Ray Highway, and they'll be a partner in this science at its finest to create a beautiful pollinator garden. So when you're enjoying the trail, you know, you'll have that beauty rather than just looking at sod and no art there. It's going to be a wonderful project. Beverly, thank you.
Okay. All right, council. Councilman Parkus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Shannon, just a quick question, just to make sure, based on the pictures you sent, it looks like it's going to be somewhere in that triangle between the signage that's on Church Street and where those benches start. That's the location for the mural?
That's correct. That little triangle, I think in total, it's about 85 feet, and at its widest, like 26 feet.
Okay.
So it's not a huge area, but it's sizable. It'll look beautiful with the sculpture.
Yeah, and it's all grass right now.
Yeah, it's all sod.
And so just to make sure I understand, kind of long-term, so my understanding is that the sculpture itself will be around for anywhere from three to five years.
Correct.
But then the wildflower, the meadow basically will be there indefinitely.
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hood?
What, you mentioned that there would be $1,500 from the city, but what are the maintenance requirements from the standpoint of staff?
Yes, ma'am. It'll actually cost less to maintain as a wildflower meadow. I know, I go up to that trail every day. I ride my e-bike along that way. And I know when we spray poison, that's a lot of cost, and it's not only a cost to the environment and to the city, but it's a cost to our health. So that eliminates mowing and that. It'll need to be mowed once or twice a year, and you know, there'll be signage that educates people on why it's there and what it's about. And did that answer your question? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Since this is a new item and it has financial implications in terms of that, I'll open it up if the public would like to speak on this. And if you do, you have to come up to the podium and speak. Come on.
What is the finance? I didn't get.
If you want to speak, come to the podium and speak.
Okay.
Is 1,500 the total amount that we're in debt for? Is that it?
Oh, yeah.
Right. Not 1,500 ongoing, just 1,500 once? Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a huge advocate of public art, and I.
And who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Kathy Burrows from Cleve Mark Drive.
Okay, thank you.
And I've enjoyed being here. It's great to see how everyone makes everything happen. So I just wanted to add, and Shannon's project sounds wonderful. It sounds very ambitious and very idealistic and very beautiful. I just had a question about how many other public art pieces Shannon has been commissioned for in the city? Because I'm a big advocate for a lot of artistic diversity and wanting a lot of different artistic visions to, for our murals and for our art. I don't want in any way take away from all your hard work. But I do think we need to really somehow have a panel to promote artistic diversity and curate a variety of artistic visions. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public as it relates to this item? Okay. Hearing none, I will take a motion for this particular item. And that is, again, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Clarkston and Shannon Willow Art LLC to bring in art installation called Heart of Mother Earth at Trail Green Park located on Church Street. I guess before that, Mr. Kaiser's there, you know, since we've done that, is there any issues with that in that area as a consideration?
Perfect location.
Okay, all right, thank you.
In the amount of, do you have to add?
And I'll put the amount of, thank you. So whoever makes the motion has to do the amount of $1,500.
Which one of us?
Yes.
I have a motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Bell.
I move that we adopt the resolution approving an agreement between the City of Clarkston and Shannon Willow Art LLC to bring in art installation called Heart of Mother Earth at the Trailside Green Park located on Church Street in the amount of $1,500 for admin and labor costs.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded to approve a resolution, to adopt a resolution approving agreement between the City of Clarkston and Shannon Willow Art LLC to bring in art installation called Heart of Mother Earth at Trailside Green Park located on Church Street in the amount of 1,500 for admin.
And labor costs.
And labor costs. Okay. Is there further discussion? Okay. You ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion pass. Okay, with that, I'll entertain. And going forward, I know we get so excited about all these things that we're doing, but I want us to contain that motion, okay? Just use your inner voice when you get excited about this stuff, because we're still in a meeting. We want to make sure when we can to celebrate, and I love when you show those smiles to celebrate all the great things that we're doing. So on that note, council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.